What are you saying? You should be...
(laughing) Not yet. You have to press the button, right? Oh. Testing one, two, three. Test. Oh. One. Okay, uh, give me the, are we on, are we on the air? Okay. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, I'd like to welcome you to the Sun's debate, uh, here at Harmony Hall tonight. Uh, we're featuring the three candidates for school committee and then we'll feature the four candidates for selectmen at about eight o'clock or about forty-five minutes after this debate, uh, after this debate begins. I'd like to thank the town of Drakken and the town manager, uh, for helping us set this up tonight. Um, so, thank you, town of Drakken and Jim Duggan, and we'll just get right to the questions. We'll start with, um, we'll just go in the direction you guys are sitting. We'll go with Allison, Betsy, and Tim, then we'll just try to switch, okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, just, just a couple of basic ground rules. You get a minute to respond, and, um, if another candidate wants to respond to something you said, we'll certainly loosen the, the loose rules we have and, you know, you'll have that opportunity, okay? So why don't we just get right on to it? And you'll hear that in a minute from my boss, Jim Campanini, the editor of the Sun. So the first question is, do you support the upcoming override, uh, to support the school department? And please be specific and please elaborate in your answer. Allison, we'll start with you.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes, I do. Are we talking about the one just for the schools or for both?
Schools.
Schools. Uh, yes, I do support the override. I do believe we are underfunded, uh, from the state and we need more resources for technology. And also, if we do it now with the, the upgrade now with technology, we will take advantage of the two hundred thousand dollar rebate from the state, from the state, which will be going away in a couple of years. So, no one's holding up signs to tell me how much time I have left.
Okay.
So I can keep going or is that...
Well, you have a minute.
Okay.
As we said earlier, you can use it. You don't have to.
So I'm, yes, I'm absolutely in favor of anything that is going to help the schools. I think it's a prudent amount. I think the, the number came from lots of research. Uh, I don't think it's arbitrary and I think it's very conservative, actually, because the money that we will get with the rebate will also be used to hopefully hire more counselors and be applied in the future for other things that the school will need as we go forward.
Betsy, uh, you're the one incumbent seeking reelection here, uh, to this, to this school board, so take it away.
Well, I would concur with Mrs. Volpe that, yes, I absolutely do support the override. Um, the amount that we have forwarded to the Board of Selectmen, um, and they have decided that they agreed to put it on the ballot, is five hundred fifty thousand dollars for technology upgrades, which will then, as Mrs. Volpe just pointed out, kick in another two hundred thousand dollar rebate for the government, which is time-sensitive. So, we are turning five hundred fifty thousand dollars into seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. That in and of itself is pretty amazing. The fact that we are asking for a technology upgrade at a time when we are going to need that technology for testing and preparing our students for a twenty-first century education is critical, in my opinion. And not only will it benefit our school system and continue to support the foundation that we've laid over the last three years for the kind of education our students need, it's going to benefit our town, because our town is going to be able to take advantage of the internet and fiber optics that have been laid, that will be laid down. And in the year two and year three, um, we're going to have voice, I never say this correctly, so my apologies, voice over internet capabilities, which is really crucial for our schools to be able to speak to one another, um, if for no other reason, for safety. Recently, the Brookside Elementary School, which is the last school in our school complex campus over here on Lakeview Avenue, lost communication for an entire day, because that's how poor our system is to be able to communicate with one another. Um, that's unacceptable to me, and these monies are, are going to go to solve some real brick and mortar problems, and that would be a really important example to give as to why this money would benefit not only our students, but our town as well.
Thank you. And now, uh, Tim Woods, the former Drakken High School Athletic Director and a former school committee member, you can take a stab at that one.
Thank you, Kristen. Thank you for hosting this event tonight. Uh, I'm the one who does not, uh, support the override. I don't support the override. I'm, I'm, instead, I'm for accountability. I don't think the override is going to pass. I think that's a reality, and it won't pass because eighty percent of the taxpayers in the town who don't have children in the schools have lost their confidence in the Drakken Public Schools' financial decision-making. For example, uh, they look at the school department coming to them saying, "We need more money. Uh, we're gonna do another override after we just did an override for the new school." Then they turn around and hand out eight percent pay raises. That throws up a lot of red flags. In addition to that, it's been a series of financial, uh, mistakes. The school department has voted twice in four years to double user fees. They've added new taxes or fees on transportation, parking, et cetera. This year alone, they collected a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars in bus transportation fees. Added to that, a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in sports fees, parking fees, performing arts fees. That's over five hundred thousand collected in fee, in fees in the last year. Add that to, uh, net school spending, which has gone up one point six million. They have two million dollars more than what they've had before. That doesn't even count funds coming from renting the Parker School. Meanwhile, the system is down by at least five hundred students. The money's not reaching the classrooms. When you're doing these kind of things now, they've, now they're facing an eighty thousand dollar deficit in transportation. I understand that's coming up. I understand it maybe because they didn't go out to bid in a timely manner for their, with, before they gave their number to Town Hall. These type of financial dec- decisions make it look like we're putting money into a leaking boat. I'd rather fix those leaks before we put more money into it. They, uh, they were offered a free audit. The town was gonna pick up the tab for thirty thousand dollars. They said, "No, thanks. We'll take that out of our own money." There's another thirty thousand dollars, um, off the table. We're throwing money you have, after bad policies, and it's not helping our kids. Town spending on, on education is up two point five seven million dollars. Problem is, it's not going to Drakken, because the families are being forced out of Drakken. The number of kids going to outside districts has doubled in the last ten years. Every child that walks out of this town takes a minimum of ten thousand dollars, or if they're going to the vote, it's closer to nineteen thousand dollars with them. We start keeping those people in town. Eat, our goal, let's, let's keep fifty, fifty kids in town. That's five hundred thousand dollars right off the bat. We need to tighten up the ship before we ask for more.
Betsy, do you want to take a stab at that?
I do.
Allison, I think you do too. Go ahead.
I absolutely do. First of all, I would argue some of the numbers. Net school spending has not gone up by the figure that Mr. Woods just mentioned. Actually, I will tell you that net school spending in Drakken last year, let's see, FY sixteen, five point one percent over the demand of the state. Last year, four point one percent over, which is fifteen thousand dollars. So those numbers, I guess we have some disagreement about that, Mr. Woods, number one.
With Town Hall, yes.
With number one. Number two, um, you're absolutely right. Students are leaving Drakken's public school system. One of the reasons that they're re, leaving the Drakken Public School System, although many are coming back, is that they are not finding the services at our school system that they would like to have for their children, such as languages at the middle school, a second language at the high school, adjustment councils for our students. Right now, we have one for twelve hundred students. The average in the state is one for three hundred and thirty-three students. We don't have enough teachers at the elementary school to have the right size for our classroom. So you're absolutely right. Some, some people are leaving, and again, they're coming back, because they find that they've got a really good education here in Drakken. But one of the reasons that they are leaving is they don't have the things that they need to have, the kind of education they want for their children. In today's world, you can't go into the military with a GED anymore. You have to have a high school diploma. You have to be well-prepared to go into a high-tech military. If you want to go to the kind of colleges our kids are, are getting into, but we want to make sure they have every opportunity, they also need to have other languages at the high school and AP courses and the electives that we do not have. And the idea that we have raised funds to the level of five hundred thousand dollars with user fees, I would dispute that amount as well.
Those figures came from your own...
Okay, Tim, ho, hold on. It's Allison's turn. Allison?
Okay, um, so I think Betsy covered a lot of things that I was thinking about myself. I just wanted to say, I don't think people are, I think folks are very reluctant to leave our schools. Uh, I think to say that it is, they're being forced out is unfair. I know a lot of parents who had a really tough choice to leave our schools, and I, I agree with Betsy. They're leaving because we don't have the technology, um, we don't have the innovation, we don't have the social, emotional counselors to meet their needs, um, we don't have a lot of the, the options that would make them stay. One of the things that concerns me the most, if we cut the budget further, is that we'll lose more teachers. I think the teachers are, they're the, they're the core of our school. They're the ones that teach our children, and I think even some of our teachers are very, um, unsatisfied with their current, I know people talk about teacher salaries and things like that. Our teacher salaries are lower than averages, and we need to have more competitive salaries and we need to have better com, competitive schools, or we're gonna lose more teachers and we're gonna lose more students.
Thank you, Allison. Um, now, Betsy, this is a question I'd like to start with you. Uh, Tim raised this issue. The school department did give raises to some administrators and to the superintendent. I think within the last six months or so, maybe four months. Todd would know better than I do, but, and then you come back for an override. So how do you, how do you explain that to the voter? You know, on one hand, you're giving raises, and on the next hand, you want more money. So can you address that question? Then, Tim, you can take another stab at that, Allison.
I certainly can. And I think it's an important question to ask and to answer, quite honestly. Raises were given to senior leadership in the district, superintendent was one of those senior leaders, obviously, the most senior leader, other than the school committee. However, the majority of the raises were given to our principals of our, of our elementary, middle, and high schools, because this is my, I can't speak for the five of us, obviously. I can only speak for myself, although it was certainly unanimous vote. We were not able to offer the kind of raises that we would have wanted to, to our teachers. And for that reason, we lost a lot of our veteran teachers, people we didn't want to lose, and it has happened over and over again in Drakken. As a matter of fact, one of the patterns in Drakken has been that people come to Drakken, they like working here, uh, they hone their skills, they, uh, have professional development offered to them, and they take advantage of it, and they become wonderful teachers. However, they are offered six, or at the minimum, six percent less for their abilities here in Drakken than they are in surrounding communities. Sorry, they just took, took me by surprise for a moment. So we lost a lot of teachers. And because of that, we had more money in our salary line than we would normally have had. We had the opportunity, at that point, to use those monies to make sure that we didn't have to repeat a mistake that we saw the previous year with a talent drain that we've seen continually in Drakken. Principals coming for a year or two, maybe three, turning over and leaving, because they're running seven hundred student schools by themselves without a vice principal, without a guidance counselor, and they are being paid, they were being paid fifteen to twenty percent lower than their counterparts in the Merrimack Valley. We have done so much work in this school system. The people, ooh, thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Uh, Tim, you can elaborate on your earlier comment there about the raises for a minute?
Well, Mrs. Murphy's comment basically was that we need to pay, uh, the superintendent that much of an increase, uh, to keep talent. I would rather have seen that linked to performance of the school system. Right now, Drakken is a level-three school system. Argue what, what, what you will, but, but that's the fact. It's a level-three out of four si, out of four levels. That's not good. You can point and say, "Well, all the other schools are level-two," but my question to that would be, where's the level-one school? In a town that's as homogeneous as Drakken is, uh, it's certainly suburban, at least one of our schools should be a level-one school, and we don't see that. So I would rather have seen the committee link that to some type of performance, instead of locking us in to an underperforming system for another two or three years. Again, wrong pay raise at the wrong time sends the wrong message to the voters. And again, eighty percent of the taxpayers in this town do not have kids in the school. When you, you send out one message that says, "We don't have enough money. We don't have enough money to pay our teachers' pay raises," and you say how important the teachers are, but then you turn around and you lump all that money onto a few administrators, wrong message.
Yes or no? Would you have a, be in favor of the raises if they didn't then come back for an override?
Not at eight percent, at one shot.
Allison?
So this is where I'm kind of in the middle with my two opponents here. Um, I'm an auditor in compliance. That's my professional job, so...
Two kids in the school department, right?
Yes. I worked, I work full-time as a compliance manager, and I have two kids in the schools. Coming from private industry, I don't rarely see that high of a raise, uh, so I would have been hard-pressed to approve something of that nature. That being said, I understand the reasons the school committee did this. If you look at what the school committee's job is, it is to make sure that everything you do is in the best interest of the schools. However, I think because of the fiscal situation in our town, I don't, I would have preferred to see it tied to specifics. In my audit field, in my professional life, our raises are tied to specific goals and objectives. So I don't know what the original, uh, contract was with Mr. Stone. If, if that was the case, it could have been, but had I been on there, I, I would have preferred to see it tied to these two more specific, um, directives. But I understand the reasons, obviously. I understand the reasons.
All right, Betsy, just a quick response to that. Were these raises tied to performance or were they not?
Yes, they were. That's a bit, but as quick as you can get. Yes, they were. There's an evaluation tool, and it's a rubric that's, um, generated by the state, and, um, the superintendent has to meet those criteria, or, uh, more to the point, we hope he meets those criteria, or her, as it were. And he was rated, and he was rated exemplary by all five members of the school committee in just about every level you could possibly, um, think of, and that was the case for the last four years.
What about the principals, too?
Principals, I would have to pull out what the superintendent, um, gave to us. I don't remember off the top of my head, but all of them did very, very well. And in addition to the salaries, my apologies, sorry. All of a sudden, it seemed like God was talking from the ceiling or something. The principals, um, I'm sorry, I lost track of my train of thought. The principals and our superintendent, we, they gave us an extra two years on all of those contracts, in addition to, um, in exchange for having... A raise in their salary.
Okay. All right, thank you. We'll move on to the next question now. I think this one goes to you, Tim. Do you favor a longer school day for students and more class time for teachers? Or is the present setup providing the best learning environment?
Interesting. Of course, uh, that's a very, uh, current topic coming up.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's ongoing. Certainly, research dictates that, uh, high school kids respond better with a later starting date, uh, so theoretically, more sleep time. I think that, uh, w, we had, we, we discussed this at the, at the last debate. I, I think we were all pretty in, uh, concurred that it's a good idea to start the high school later in the day, um, because the high, the, they learn better with more sleep. Get that. The problem is, when you try to mesh that with all the ways that your school s, system connects with all the surrounding towns. Now, the Middlesex League, uh, the superintendents are assigned on so that the whole league would do that. That would work, but, um, what you have to do first, before you go any further with that, is thoroughly exa, uh, examine what this is gonna do for your transportation costs, because it could be that you have X number of buses, that it could be that the high school is starting at seven fifteen, which I believe is too early, uh, starting at seven fif, fifteen, so those same buses can go to some other neighborhood, pick up those kids, and get, get them to another school. So, if you move back to high school, are you gonna have to move up another school, or are you gonna have to hire new buses? Uh, we're not in a position to, to add to our transportation budget at this time. Do I think it's a good idea? Yes, to an extent. Seven fifteen, I think is too early. Uh, kids reading lunch might be ten o'clock. But I don't think we need to go to nine o'clock or nine-thirty. I think something around eight o'clock, eight, eight-ten is, is fine.
Allison?
So, um, I, I agree with a lot of what, what Mr. Woods has said. Just to clarify, is the question about earlier start times or longer days? I, can you repeat that? Both?
More lo, longer days and more classroom time for the students.
Okay.
And not just high school. You know, this is...
Oh, system-wide.
That, you know, it's a really interesting concept. I have not seen any research that shows that longer days are as effective. I think it would be better to have the time spent in the classroom more useful and more consolidated. In fact, I would like to see no homework for elementary schools at all. There's no research that I've seen to suggest that elementary school homework adds value, so I think having these younger kids, particularly in school longer, is gonna be more detrimental.
So elementary, you mean grades one through six?
K to five.
K to five.
K to five. And I'm also looking at some other countries. They, I would personally like to see, and it wouldn't happen, because it would have to be a whole statewide shift. I, you never know, but, um, some countries like Australia, they go to school all year long, and the schools' times actually are comparable to the parents' workdays. So they all go to school at the same time as the parents go to work. They don't work as long hours as Americans do. We work, we work way too long hours, anyway, but all the vacation times are the same. Um, they promote family vacations. I mean, so I think the American way of doing things could definitely be changed, but I, I don't think a longer school day, it would add much value, actually. I think it would be more of playtime for the kids, because they'll be mentally and physically exhausted at the end of the day.
Betsy?
Well, I don't think that, that there's, you can't dispute the fact that the re, the research and common sense says that high school kids should start later. There's, there's, there's no way around agreeing with that. I think we all agree with that. The question becomes, is it feasible, as things currently stand? Meaning, um, to propose that and have it moved forward, you would have to, not that you couldn't, and the, and the community would have to be behind it, because, quite honestly, it would, it would require having union contracts changed and bus schedules changed. Mr. Woods is not incorrect about that. It would be an entire district change, because we probably, most likely, have to have our ele, elementary kids start earlier, which, again, is probably not a bad thing. Elementary kids tend to be up early and ready to go earlier. So can it happen? It can happen. Will it happen? I think it would take an awful lot of, um, ingenuity and, and agreement and collaboration with a whole bunch of stakeholders, and we t, Mrs. Volpe makes a very good point. Although many parts of the world work in a different system, we live in a culture that has certain expectations about what our students are going to do with themselves at two o'clock in the afternoon, and that's a little bit more difficult to battle than bus schedules and unions, quite honestly.
All right, so this next question, um, I would like it if, if you don't take a minute to respond. Try to keep it to a few words, maybe even yes or no. So we're making a little assumption here, that Drakken residents, by and large, can afford to pay more of their fair share of income to support the schools, but refuse to do so because, in general, they mistrust the school department and/or the teachers' union. Betsy, I think you're first on this.
Are you asking me if I believe that there are people that are of that opinion?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
And do you sense that in the community, or do people tell you that directly?
There have been people that have told me that they, that they don't necessarily feel that way themselves, but historically, there has been that feeling in Drakken, although my suspicion is that school committees in other communities have that same natural distrust. So I, I think it's part of, I know you didn't want me to say too much.
No, go ahead, just go.
I think it's partly in, a natural distrust of government, a natural distrust of school committees, um, and probably, I think historically in Drakken, there has been, um, some loggerheads between the school committee and mu, and municipal government, and they haven't necessarily been as collaborative as maybe we have seen in recent months and years, I'd say.
Tim?
Yes. I would agree with that wholeheartedly. There's very definable distrust in, in the town, uh, of the school department, uh, and I think the reasons that I, I mentioned earlier, the decision ma, the decisions I referred to earlier exacerbate that problem. There is a solid, solid distrust between Town Hall and the school department. It's very difficult, and this will be one of the things that I will attack right off the bat, um, to get the same figures from both sides. I can go to Town Hall, and they tell me we have X number of teachers in the system. I come to Drakken, the, the school department, they tell me a different number. Solid distrust between municipal and, and town. I would like to merge...
I'll have to ask the selectmen about that one.
Yes, you can. (laughing) Um, I, I, I would look to merge some, some operations between us and municipal government to make them more streamlined. At least everybody would be using the same set of figures. But that, to answer your question, yes, it's there. And by the way, excuse me, if I can just add, it doesn't have to be. I work in a system now where it is absolutely the opposite, and you can, you can, you can sell that, uh, the schools to the people all day long.
And what community is that? Where do you work?
Uh, Lexington, just part-time down there. Retired, I said. But, uh, it's a whole different atmosphere. Really is.
Allison?
So I would say, yes, there is definitely a mistrust. I think it's been going on for far too long. I'm a relative newcomer to town. I've been here ten years, and I honestly, I'm done with it. I want to move past it. I just recently looked over the twenty-ten, um, district-level review from the Department of Education. Oh, I always say this wrong, elementary, secondary, education.
Yes.
So, back in twenty-ten, they made some recommendations, actually, this was called out in the audit, that there was a lack of transparency, a lack of trust between the town and the schools, and this was in twenty-ten. So I would, on the board, I would want to see these things happen. One of the recommendations was consolidate town and school accounting systems.
Excuse me.
Is that too wrong? To reduce redundancy and, are you telling me it's too...
Yeah, it's me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, but no, I just quickly want to read these, but, like, Mr. Woods was saying, consolidate the system. Use one accounting system. We don't have to have two. I think one of the questions, one of the suggestions was, schools should and would provide transparent reports to the town upon request. When town asks, "What is the money being spent on?" If we have a similar accounting system, town can look at the reports themselves, and also, school can look at town. There doesn't need to be this disconnect. And then finally, I thought this was really interesting and, and wasn't sure if it's been implemented, but it said it, it should be, uh, there should be a written and signed agreement between the town and the school that clearly describes municipal expenditures in support of schools' chargebacks. A written agreement of what they are every year, or what, a written agreement for a five-year plan, they should be provided in a report every year, and the method of calculation should be described as well. So I think just those three simple things would go so far in getting rid of this mistrust.
Yeah, you deserve it, as the incumbent, you should respond to that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. First of all... I think that there has been, in the past, distrust between, um, school committee, accounting, and how things are done in the school committee, and municipal sides of government. What I think the Joint Budget Task Force did a wonderful job with, uh, of which I was a part, and Dr. McNamara was as well, um, from the school committee, and Mr. Archensky and Mrs. Hughes, who happened to chair it, from the Board of Selectmen. They did a wonderful job, and I say "they" because it was the administrators who did the, the heavy work on the finance part of this, came to an understanding about each other's accounting practices, and the reason for that is, we have to report to a... A different form of, sorry, that caught my attention again, of state government than does the munis, mu, municipal side of government. We have to report to DESI. They have to report to the Department of Revenue. Now, I learned an awful lot about municipal government when I was on that tri-board, and I believe that the Board of Selectmen, probably, you can ask them, I don't know, um, learned an awful lot about school finance. And more importantly, I'll give you an example. There was a disagreement, or a misunderstanding is a better word, during that time when we had the Joint Budget Task Force, between our two, um, complimentary business people on the school, in the school department and the municipal side of government, about what an FTE is, full-time employee, in the school department. The municipal side had a really hard time understanding, "Well, why is it this way? Why is it this way?" And finally, it, it, it was explained at the Joint Budget Task Force, that one of the reasons people had mistrust of one another on both sides of government was we're using different vocabulary for the, for the same type of thing.
that one of the reasons people had mistrust of one another on both sides of government was we're using different vocabulary for the, for the same type of thing. And the fact that that was cleared up and there was an understanding on the municipal side of government about what an FTE is and the way we have to report it to the state, all of a sudden cleared up so many understandings about why things are reported the way they are and why numbers sometimes don't seem to jive. Well, guess what? Now they jive. And we walked out of that Joint Budget Task Force with both sides of government agreeing, these are the numbers, these are real. Nobody's disputing anything. Yes, we misunderstood each other sometimes as we walked through the six-month process. It wasn't always easy. But it was a long time in coming and it really did a wonderful job to eradicate a lot of the misconceptions that each other had about how finances are done.
Okay. Um, Allison, I'm gonna leave you out of this next round for obvious reasons. You guys have both been with the school department for a long time. Tim, athletic director, school committee member. Betsy, you're on the school committee mem- you're a school committee member now. You've both acknowledged that there's this mistrust issue and this, this disconnect. Tim, you said it was a solid mistrust. So what have either one of you done to alleviate this mistrust in your appointed or your elected positions?
Well, I think, uh, as, I'm sorry, why don't you go ahead first? I didn't mean to.
No, then, Tim, take it. Then, Betsy, you can take it.
It's okay.
Um, I think, uh, the proof is in the pudding. Um, I was on, I was the chairman of the Drakken School Committee when we worked night after night tirelessly to, uh, figure out a way that Drakken could build a new building. Uh, we hadn't had a new school building built in over thirty years, uh, really didn't have, um, the wherewithal to add more to our tax base. And, um, after a lot of work, a lot of numbers crunching, similar to the, uh, the task force that, uh, the tri-board that Mrs. Murphy mentioned, um, a lot of arguing back and forth between the three boards, uh, we came up with a way to build a new building without a tax override, without a dex- uh, debt exclusion, uh, without new taxes, just built it into the current debt structure. That, at that point, that was the first time that it happened in the state. So it can be done. I think I've proven that I can do it. Um, it all starts with communication. One thing I think, I, you know, you have to, you can't, you have to be, one thing that I, I think this thing about the, the pay raises undermined a lot of the cooperation that was set up on that board. I think other members in that board felt that they were undermined by, they were, they were caught blindsided by, by that exposure to the public, you know? So you're gonna be careful about those financial decisions. They can, they can eat away easily when you're trying to break down those walls.
Betsy.
Well, I think the question was, what have I done specifically? Am I correct?
Yep.
Um, what I have done is build relationships with the folks that are on the Board of Selectmen. We may not always agree and that's okay. Um, however, I have consciously, over the last three years, sought out relationships, both, um, one-on-one and also with the Board of Selectmen. Um, I have been respectful. I have asked for conversations about how they feel about how we work as, on the school committee. How can we better, um, engender trust between our two boards? Um, called for, uh, calm, I guess, is the word I would use, um, at this moment.
How about détente?
I'll go with that. Thank you. Détente, when there are times when tempers were ready to flare and maybe folks might've wanted to say things in the moment because they're passionate about how they feel. And I have counselled that this is not the moment to be sp- saying something of that nature. Let's go home and think about this. Talk to your spouse and then we'll come back in the morning. Um, and if nothing else, I have no doubt that my reputation as somebody who's going to be transparent and I say what I mean and I mean what I say is, is, um, clear to the Board of Selectmen and to the community. And I, I agree with Mr. Woods that there have been many times when folks have been uncomfortable with the school committee has done. And I think the fact that we, this current school committee, took the votes on our raises for senior leadership in executive session, did not engender trust, and I understand why. Because when it was brought to my attention that that should not have happened in executive session and I reached out to our attorney to see if we had indeed broken open meeting law and I found out that, yes, indeed, we had done that, I was very upset for two reasons. First of all, upset that it happened. Second of all, that it happened on my watch because I happened to be the chair of the school committee at the time. First thing we did was find out how to remedy the situation. And this, the remedy is, you do it in open session. You, you take the vote again, you have the whole conversation again, which is exactly what we did the moment we had the opportunity to do that, number one. Number two, it was so upsetting to me, I said, how could this have happened? How could this have happened that we would've done this? One of my colleagues, who's been a longer-serving member than I on the board, said, this is how Drakken has always taken their votes about salaries. Well, no wonder people aren't trusting us, number one. Number two, I went back to see if that was true. And indeed, people have always taken votes on salaries in executive session. We were the committee that stopped that practice. We were the committee who said, we're not doing this anymore. We're gonna be transparent. We're going to fix this issue.
Alright, thanks, Betsy. Allison, we'll start this next round with you. As you've been campaigning through town, what is the most common complaint or concern a cons- a prospective constituent has told you about the school department? And how have you responded to that complaint or concern?
Well, it depends. There are differ- different opinions from different areas and sectors of our town. Um, so do you have a specific group you'd like me to answer about? Like, parents or?
Uh, yeah, parents, you know, yeah, voters, you know, people who are watching the election for school committee, obviously.
Uh, I think parents want to see our schools in a better place. I think parents are willing to pay for it. Um, I think that they are supportive of the teachers and the staff. Um, there was a, an au- an, an, an ongoing audit last year from DESE, I'm not even trying to say it. Um, there were forty parents that came, and I attended that session, there were about forty parents who came and they spoke about what, their thoughts about the school. And every parent said they're, they love the teachers, they like that, they're seeing consistency in leadership. They like that, um, they're seeing some changes happening. Uh, they don't like to see teachers leave. And they don't like that we don't have enough resources for our classrooms. So that's what I hear from the parents. Um, from other areas of town, some of the seniors I've, I've gotten to know, they've been here longer, they've seen a lot of things. They see a beautiful new building and they see money being spent and they're wondering why we need so much money. So I understand that that mistrust, um, has, has taken its toll. And I think a lot of folks unfortunately are either for the schools or against the schools at this point. And that's one of the things that I wanna change because honestly, I don't understand the reason for it. Um, but yeah, I, I'm hearing completely opposite ends of the spectrum as I'm talking to people.
Thank you, Allison. Betsy.
Uh, the number one concern that I hear is that we are working incredibly hard to do all the wonderful things we do, but there's a concern that we're gonna burn out. And that's a concern of mine as well. Meaning that our teachers do more with less. We send kids to phenomenally great schools. Um, we have peer educators who give their time when they are not on the clock anymore. We have senior administrators and principals who work around the clock because we don't have the resources that we need to support students in the classroom. We don't have the technology available to support the twenty-first learning education environment that they need. So people are concerned that, yes, we're doing a wonderful job, but if we continue to sound the alarm as we have about what kind of funds we're going to need to continue to support our kids, well, we don't know where we're going. I would say maybe an uncertainty that we really love our teachers, we really love our principals, we think our kids are doing well, but where are we going next? We don't want to see more teacher layoffs. We want to see the kind of technology that we know our kids need. We want our kids to be prepared and we're concerned that that may stop and we don't know.
Thank you. Tim? Then I wanna try to get one more round of questions in, then it's almost time for your closing statements.
Sure. Um, certainly, what I hear as I go around town, very much so, is, uh, number one, communication. Parents complain about communication from the school department to them. Recently, I received a call from a parent whose, uh, child had been involved in a very serious, uh, security breach at, at the high school. And that parent was never contacted by, was, had been questioned, interviewed, overwhelmed, was never co- contacted by hi- high school staff. Um, had to wait and call the school two days later when they found out about it, uh, to find out what was happening. That type of thing can't, cannot happen. So communication is a big issue. Uh, complaints about transportation. The new redistricting has a lot of the people in Kenwood upset. Uh, they traditionally, they're very close to the Campbell School, they live in that neighborhood, and their kids are being transported to the Greenmont School. That's another concern that, um, that I've heard. I've heard about overcrowding at the, at the Richardson School, um, being a real, a real serious problem with the new grade structure. Um, the comment about, um, sounding the alarm, uh, that brings up another thing. It's like, all they hear about is what we don't have. All they hear about is, I, I believe there was a, a push for an override three years ago or four years ago, I'm not sure which. And that, that didn't go anywhere. Then it was the trash fee. Now it's another override. And all this, all this, uh, doomsday talk is one of the things that's driving people out of the system. Um, instead of accentuating the great things that the teachers and, and the, the schools do, all they hear about is what we don't have and the negative. And why would they send the kids here?
Okay, so all three of you have agreed that there's been an exodus of students from the Drakken Public Schools, correct? Alright, so Allison, starting with you, wouldn't a public charter school in Drakken help? Or would you welcome that? At least it'd be staying in Drakken.
Why do I get this? Why do I get this?
All, all three of them are, don't worry.
I'll take it if you want.
You're welcome to answer it. I'm, I'm fine. Okay, charter schools, it's a very complicated issue.
It is.
Very, very complicated issue.
I'm not sure I understand the whole issue, but.
I'm not sh- I'm, I'm trying very hard to understand the issue. The, I, I completely understand why people go to charter schools. I completely understand why they exist. I would rather see, the original intent of charter schools was to kind of pilot, um, an innovative try, an innovative teaching style and also to serve underserved areas where kids are just not getting the education that they need in their areas. Well, that's not happening right now. To me, charter schools, they're w- are wonderful teaching environments. They're innovative, they use project-based, um, small groups. I mean, it's just a completely different style of teaching. I would rather, instead of building a new school, like we talk about building new buildings in Drakken, I would, instead of building a new school, I would fix the one we have. I would rather see us get teachers more professional development so they can start learning some of these innovative approaches. There's no reason why we can't use them here. We have a standard curriculum, but we still, the teachers still have some flexibility. And correct me if I'm wrong, but you still have the flexibility to teach in a different way. So instead of putting money in another charter school, I would focus on the Drakken Public Schools.
So you would be opposed to a charter school in Drakken?
I mean, if I had to say yes or no, at this time, I would say I would be opposed, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Because I also don't think they're fair because they're a lottery-based system and it wouldn't be accessible to every student in school in Drakken. And that defeats the purpose of public school.
That's a topic for a whole nother night.
That's enough, you know, we could probably go on and on about that.
Betsy.
Well, for two reasons, no, I would not be in favor of, of a charter school in Drakken. First of all, a charter school is a public school. So there's one in the neighboring town. Students from Drakken, if they so choose to go to a charter school, can go to one in the neighboring town. So I don't see much point in building one in Drakken when there's one so close by, it's number one. And number two, the, the biggest issue I have with charter schools are the fact that when a student is considered, considered whether or not that student should be eligible for special education services. A charter school will refer the child and will test the child and find the child eligible or not. But if that child is found eligible at the charter school, we don't have a seat at the table as the sending school. Drakken cannot be a part of that system as they can be here in Drakken. However, the bill is automatically sent to Drakken. There's something inherently wrong about that system. And that's my biggest concern is, it, it's not a level playing field. You can say all you want that they're doing wonderful things at charter schools, and I'm not saying that's not true. However, if you're gonna compare apples to apples, compare apples to apples. Don't compare apples to oranges. It's just, it's, it's, it's a system that is inherently unfair, in my opinion. It certainly is for students.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tim.
Well, I, I could go on for the, about this, uh, I'm, I'm-
You have sixty seconds.
Most of my career has been spent at a, a school of choice where you had to recruit students or you didn't have a job. And I think that makes a school more responsive to a family's needs. That's one of the things I like about charter schools. We've got about twelve years of history with charter schools now. Um, there are eighty-one, uh, active charters. They originally issued a hundred and nine, there's eighty-one active now. They only, they only service four percent of the school population. Um, the part I like about charter schools is the entrepreneurship. The fact that they have to recruit, they have, they have to sell themselves. You gotta love the, the smaller class sizes, that's good. Parents tend to be more vested for whatever reason there. Um, having limited seats at their school allows them to tacitly pick and choose who comes to their school. And as Mrs. Murphy said, the biggest thing is, once that kid needs outside services, he goes back to their home district. They're not spending chunks of money on outside-
Placements for kids.
Um, if, if a student has a behavioral problem, he's called out of there. Again, um, they don't service all, the needs of all the kids. Now, um, what, what I would like to see, short answer, my, my thing is, I think that we've got enough, we've got, we've got enough history to find out what happens, what makes them good. I think it's time for us to look at, at having a charter school within a school. In other words, to mesh the two systems. I could see, like, for example, Low High School-
Like the Latin Lyceum? Like the Latin Lyceum at Low High School?
Exactly. Like the Latin Lyce- Lyceum approach. Um, it's, that's what I would like, a merger of the two. And I think that you could, the teachers now, I think that you could get them to the table and talk about the differences in the two. I know there's, there's labor issues, but I think that would be the next step. Because we've, we're seeing all kinds of, and by the way, the new Senate bill will increase, they're, they're gonna try to increase funding for every student in order to open up more seats. Well, the problem is, I don't know that the state's got the money to do that. So I don't know where that's going. But I think the next step is to merge both.
Okay. Well, we've been going almost fifty minutes now, so now we'll, uh, start with, um, our closing statements. We'll go with, um, in alphabetical order. Betsy, that's you, then we'll go Allison, then we'll go Tim. So you got about a minute, minute and a half, okay?
Right. Well, thank you very much for having the opportunity to-
Thank you.
Once again, have conversation with the two folks, um, that are also running for school committee. Um, I know that Mr. Woods in particular has said that we have been fiscally irresponsible. I would heartily disagree with that. And one of the reasons I have such a hard time with that is the fact that Mr. Woods himself voted for very significant raises for the superintendent that he supervised when he was on the school committee for nine years. For example, the first three years of Mr. Stone's administration, from two thousand twelve to two thousand fifteen, he had an increase of nine and a half percent. The first three years of the superintendency, uh, that Mr. Wood supervised, that superintendent's salary was raised by fourteen percent, if you do not count her annuity, which Mr. Stone does not have. If you add the annuity, she had a nineteen percent increase in her salary the first three years of her superintendency. That, to me, cuts the legs out from under the argument that we have been fiscally irresponsible. Um, I have a real problem with that. That's number one. Number two, the idea that there's no pride in Drakken is baloney. We are very proud of our students. We are very proud of what they do. We are extremely proud of everything they do when they leave Drakken High School. We are extremely proud of everything they do when they are at Drakken Public Schools. Just because I'm advocating for the kind of funds that we need to continue to do the work that we need to do does not mean that we are fiscally irresponsible and does not mean that we are not proud. I am phenomenally proud to be in this community, to raise my family here, to have had families that have come from Drakken for two hundred years. We chose to stay in this community for a reason and I'm very glad that we did. Thank you very much for having this opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you. Allison, the floor is yours.
Oh. T U V W. Okay. That's good. I had to think about that for a minute.
Are you running for school committee?
Not an educator. Thank you.
You teach your kids.
Yes, absolutely. So, um, thank you for having me here. Um, thank you, everyone, for, for being here. Um, I've never been on a board, but I think one of my key strengths is gonna be the fact that I've been in private industry for over eighteen years. So I bring a perspective that is different from an educator's perspective. I'm also, I have experience in compliance and quality, auditing, assessment, risk assessments. One of the first things I wanna do is take the town manager up on his offer to pay for an independent risk assessment of the school board. Um, I wanna see our baseline, wh- where we are now. And I wanna dispel any questions that are out there about whether or not the, the, the schools are being irresponsible. I wanna see the numbers and see the facts for myself. Um, secondly, I'm concerned that we've been a level three for far too long. We've been a level three since at least two thousand ten. I think it's time that we, we take our district improvement plans very seriously. I've read them. They were presented in January at a school committee meeting. They're very comprehensive. And one of my other goals would be to, to monitor these plans and make sure that they come to fruition because these plans are what's gonna ha- what it's gonna take to get our schools up from level three. Um, I've hope, I've proven tonight that I'm deserving of one of your votes for school committee. I am professionally well-qualified for this type of position. I have, again, eighteen years in regulated industries, business analyst, policy process, all that real exciting stuff. That's what I love. Um, I'm also committed to this town. I have two kids in elementary school. I've, we've got a long road ahead of us. I feel I'll be a really very strong collaborative addition to the school committee. My personal motivations couldn't be more clear. They're my children, the children of this town. My professional skills, I think, are gonna be an asset to the board. Um, so with your vote on Monday, May second, um, I will be able to serve the schools and, like everyone says, benefit the teachers, the students, the staff, and the entire town of Drakken.
Thank you, Allison. Tim Woods?
Thank you, Chris. Um, I think all of us want what's best for the, for the kids in, in the schools, no doubt about that. I have three children who are, who are products of the Drakken Public Schools. I have several nieces and nephews that are here now. I may even have a grandchild coming through, you never know. Um, I served on the Drakken School Committee, uh, for three terms. I was part of, I was chairman of the committee that got that school built without new taxes. Um, worked with the other boards, so I know how to get things done. Um, the issue that defines this campaign is the failed policy- Um, the issue that defines this campaign is the failed policies of this administration. That they've driven out, uh, families from the, the excess of kids out of, out of the schools, that they've eroded public trust of the school department. Um, doubling the user fees twice, uh, needing, needing new taxes, but then telling the teachers, we don't have money, but then handing out the eight percent pay raises, was all, sent all the wrong signals. Uh, those actions turned families off. And I'm glad Mrs. Murphy brought up the point about the previous superintendent might deal with her. Yes, uh, you, at the last, uh, meeting, you mentioned that her salary went up twenty-three percent between nineteen ninety-eight and two thousand eight. Well, that comes out to two point three percent.
No, I did not say that.
We can look at the tape.
We can look at the tapes.
Fine. She was brought in at an exceedingly low rate because she was, uh, coming in after Krista Oles' icon, and there was a lot of reaction.
You were referring to Elena Spindler.
Yes. I bear, I, the, the fact is, the district had a thousand more kids in it than it does now, and more buildings in it than it does now. She never once in her ten years came back to ask for more taxes. She never came back for an override. She never came, came back to the town for more money. This was a high-performing district, higher performing than it is now, and she did it all on the budget, no layoffs, no cuts, she made it work. Um, if we're gonna move ahead, we have to regain the confidence of the eighty percent of people who don't have kids in school. As much as I love teaching, and it's my career, I've been in it for forty years, I have to acknowledge that. It all starts with the finances. I'm gonna bring the students back to Drakenet. I'm going to, you remember that every student comes back with ten thousand or nineteen thousand dollars. It doesn't take a lot to boost our coffees up. We will look for ways, as, as things on the town's budget, um, debt list expire, we'll find ways to fit in there. Throwing money into failed school department practices doesn't help our kids. I'm asking for one of, one of the two votes, because I believe in Drakenet, I know the how, I have the qualifications and the experience and determination to get it done.
Thank you, candidates. Um, we're just gonna take a short break. We'll get these guys off the stage and get the selectman up, and remember to go out and vote on May second.
Thank you.
Thank you.